Good evening. Welcome to the Urbana City Council Meeting of January 16, 2018. Will the Clerk please call the roll? I'd like to call this meeting to order.
City Council Members Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen. Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
And Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the January 8th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting minutes are approved. Any additions to the agenda? First item on public input will be from Joe Lightcap from Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus, our auditors. We place them at this point in the agenda. They have a long drive ahead of them tonight. It's going to be Elizabeth Hannan, Finance Director, as well.
So my role here is really just to introduce Joe. So Joe Lightcap is a partner with Baker Tilly who has been doing our audit now. This is the third or fourth year, I believe. I have to think about that for a minute. And so we'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having me tonight. And first off, thanks to the, thank you to the Finance Department for their extreme cooperation during our audit. We ask a lot of questions. We ask for a lot of information, and the information is always readily available, and we get, we get great answers for our questions. So, so thank you for that. There are two documents that I'll go over tonight. One is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the one with the city's logo on the front. And then the other one is the Communication to Those Charged with Governance and Management. That's the one with, with Baker Tilly's logo on the front. I will start off with Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I'm going to go over it at a really high level. If you have any questions, just stop me at any time, and we can, we can discuss. But it'll be a very high level. The first thing I want to do in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report is go to page one. And this is the Independent Auditor's Report. Once again, we've issued a clean or unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. It's the highest level of assurance you can gain from your outside auditors. Really says that the financial statements are reasonable in all material respects and can be reasonably relied upon by an outside user. The next tab, the M-DNA tab, Management's Discussion and Analysis. This is a great spot to get a good understanding of what happened in the city's financial statements during the year and compared to the prior year. If you had only 10 minutes and you wanted to know what happened, this is where I would go. It's, it's written by management, and it's, it's a really good synopsis of the year. I want to talk a little bit about the different financial statements in the report. So after the Basic Financial Statement tab, this is the Statement of Net Position. This is the, the only time during the year, and in the only spot, will you see all funds of the city and all assets and liabilities of the city in one spot. This has the capital assets and the long-term debt of the city, and all the funds combined by fund type, governmental, business type, and then the library is on the far right. The following two pages, 17 and 18, this is the Statement of Activities for the city. This is the Income Statement for the Statement of Position we just looked at. You can see at the bottom right corner of page 18, net position decreased in total by about $2.5 million. And the, the main reason for this is the result of operations which were up. We'll see that in a little bit. But then also the net pension liability for the police and fire pension plans. The, the net pension liability increased compared to the prior year, so that, that decreased your net position. I want to go to page 19 and 20. This starts the governmental funds balance. Yes?
I'm trying to make sure that I'm following, and I know you're doing this at a very high level. I don't know if I could humbly request for it to be at a medium level at least.
Sure, sure, sure.
So if you can go back to 18 a little bit slower and tie the pension piece back into what you said as far as our net position?
So I think what will help is on page 26. This kind of outlines some of the different areas of the Statement of Activities and the changes from the prior year. And maybe three-quarters of the way down the page, you have expenses for your long-term debt, including your net pension liability. And it, the net pension liability increased about $3.8 million from the prior year, which then decreases your net position when your liabilities go up. And you see at the very top row, the $1.1 million increase. That was your, your increase in fund balance at the fund levels, your general fund, your motorfield tax fund, all, all your major funds, your TIP funds. And then when you start adding on all the long-term activity of the city, that's when we get to net position. So there's a, this is the reconciliation between those two numbers.
Okay. All right. That's helpful.
There'll be, we'll see a little bit more about the net pension liability a little bit later on as well. So the, so as I was saying, on 19 and 20, this begins the fund-level presentation. You, you see in your quarterly financial statements that you receive, those are on a cash basis. This is on what we call a modified accrual basis. This has short-term receivables and payables. So you, any sales tax or income tax that you wrote at, at year-end, but you have, you receive within 60 days or, or short, shortly after the end of the fiscal year. And then any payables that you have that are due at the end of the year that you pay shortly after year-end. So this is a really short-term focus view of the city's financial statements, and it's broken out by each major fund, which has a column, and then the combining non-major governmental funds, which is all of the other funds combined. On page 24 and 25, this is the Income Statement at the fund level. So you can see how fund balance increased and decreased by fund, and that's the third row from the bottom. The general fund, fund balance decreased by a little under $6 million, which was mainly due to the transfer to the Special Reserve Fund and the transfer to the Capital Improvement and Replacement Fund for future capital projects. The fund balance at the end of the year is $9.8 million, and that's still about four months in reserves. Yes? Chris?
I just want to make a point. When we talk about general fund here, that's a combination of several funds that are called general fund in the CAFR, which is different from when we talk about general fund in the budget. So I don't want anybody to get all excited about that $9.8 million.
And then on page 25, you can see all of the governmental funds, the fund balance increase.
Wait a question.
Yes. So I'm curious, when we moved, and Elizabeth, this is for you, when we moved the, didn't we move $5 million out for Carl? Is this part of the 5.8 difference in the general, or am I mixing up stuff?
Right, yeah.
It is.
That was part of the.
So that's a special review. So basically, it's, if we consider $5 million for Carl, then it's $897,000 difference?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah. Well, it's 5.26 million, but yeah, roughly.
Okay. Half a million difference if we take that out. Thank you.
So the, when you're, you're left at the end of the year of reserves in about four months, the fund balance and expenditures. So you have delays in, property taxes is a small piece of your, your revenue, but you have, you have fund balance to pay the bills until your larger revenue streams come in. So that's, that's a, it's a good thing to look at and see how that, that goes year over year. The rest, right after these financial statements, there's page 29. This is the Income Statement for the Motor Vehicle Parking Fund. This fund being a business-type activity is shown separately, and the net position decreased about $117,000 during the year. And to include it in that is depreciation expense. That's not part of your, your normal operating budget, but it does show up in the annual financial statements. So I wanted to point that out. Without the depreciation expense, the net position would have increased. So following these, the financial statements.
Wait a question from Bill.
On the Motor Vehicle Parking Fund, that's like a business operation. We also have a landscape recycling center, which I have always thought of kind of is supposed to break even and be a business operation. Is that our choice to decide whether or not it's a business operation, or does auditor look at how it operates and decide?
See, is that the non, is it a non-major fund?
Yeah, I think it's considered a non-major fund.
Is that recycling?
No, that's different. Might be under.
I think it's just part of public works in the audit.
Um, I don't think so.
I don't know. But it doesn't seem to be broken out as an enterprise.
Is it rolled up into?
Yeah. I, I think it's combined with another fund in here somewhere, but I've, I'll dig and get that for you.
We can look it up.
Okay. Thanks.
So following these basic financial statements, there's the notes to the basic financial statements. It gives you a lot, it gives you a lot more in-depth information on what types of investments the city and the pension hold, the long-term debt remaining of the city, the pension, a lot of information on the pensions and the net pension liability. But I wanted to kind of skip over the details in the, the spirit of a high-level review and go to, even a medium-level review that gets into a lot of detail. Into the required supplementary information and more, and starting in there is a good, as, as Elizabeth mentioned, this is a lot of funds rolled together. For the general fund, but you do have your original and final budget and your actual expenditures of the general fund. So you can see by, by department and then by object, so per, so salaries and materials and supplies and other services, how those, those line items did compared to budget. But also, I think, of interest, because it's, it's relatively new and it's, it's a large, large amount, is the net pension liability. So for, on page 91, this starts IMRF. And just to see the trends in how your contribution levels and the economy as well, because the, if the market value of your investments for IMRF or the pensions do better in a given year, your net pension liability can fluctuate greatly because of that. But also your contributions play a part of that as well. For, so if we look at the planned fiduciary net position as a, as a percentage of the total pension liability, it's three rows from the bottom, you can see IMRF is about 86.38%, which is a slight increase from the prior year. This is measured back to 1231, so 123116. And that was a lot better of a market at 123116 compared to 123115, which is, is in part why the, the ratio increased from 85 to 86%. The police pension on page 93 decreased from 68% to 65%. This is, this is valued at June 30th, the market value at June 30th, because the pensions are valued at June 30th. So you can see that was a slight decrease. You can, it's mainly the net, the total pension liability, the increase in that outpaced the value of the pension plan. So just something to, to consider as, as that trends in, in different ways, and you look for a longer-term planning for the city and the pensions.
Eric?
So if I understand that rightly, if the IMRF investments did worse, then our percentage would get worse? And otherwise, the reverse, it would get better if the investments did well?
Right, right. And, and IMRF takes all that in, IMRF is very good at taking that into consideration and adjusting your contribution rate on an annual basis. And if, when, when the, the market tanked a few years ago, they really took that into consideration, and they adjusted your, your rates significantly. But then they extended it out, they smoothed it out over a five-year period so that it wasn't that big of a hit to the city. But they're, they're really good at, at taking that into consideration and, and adjusting your rate reflective of that.
Joe, I got another question for you. Medium, medium-scale explanation for what exactly planned fiduciary net position is percentage of the total pension liability? What does that actually mean?
Okay, so.
Is higher percentage bad?
No. So the total, the total pension liability is the projected future costs of retirement costs.
Right.
Of your current employees and your retirees. So that's the total pension liability is the.
Right. No, I get.
Is the denominator.
How does it relate?
Yeah. So the higher funded the plan is, the higher the percentage.
Okay.
So, so your net position in IMRF is 85% of the, or 86% of the total pension liability. So your current.
So we're not meeting 100% of our liability.
Correct.
Is the moral of the story.
Correct. But it, it's not necessarily designed to do that. It's designed to, to get, to ramp up to that point, but not to be at 100%.
Throughout its life.
Throughout its life. Even the, the state statutes are, the minimum is, is 90% by 2040. So it's, it's a ramp up more so than a, be at 100%.
So we're working our way up.
Well, yeah, as we discussed when we talked about the financial forecast, we're going to work our way up to 100% funded. But realistically, even if we had been 100% funded last year, that's going to fluctuate a little bit from year to year. Your investment earnings change. Sometimes your actuarial assumptions change, your mortality tables might be updated. It's, it's complicated.
I got you. Okay, thank you. I, I'm, I'm with you now.
Okay. I, I had a follow-up on that point right there.
Aaron?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. So when we see the drop-off from 68 to 65, is that specifically in relationship to our payment, or is that have anything to do with their investments? I just want to be clear about that.
The, you can compare the different line items from year to year to see what the big changes were. And it, it, it could be the investments, there's a big change this year, about an $8 million change in the, the expected and actual experience. So that, that could be the, the changes in, in employee, it's a big actuarial assessment, estimate. It could be the changes in their estimates. There's a lot that goes into it. It doesn't necessarily, the net investment income was about 3.35 million for police, and the interest on the total pension liability was just over that. So the interest was, was really good. And the, the interest on the total pension liability was about that. Those are kind of some numbers to compare. But depending on the demographics of the, the participants and, and changes in their potential retirement, it could fluctuate that from year to year, and that's what looks like what happened from '16 to '17.
So when we talk about being 100% funded or trying to get there, is 100% funded means that the state or that the city makes its projected contribution? Or is 100% funded mean that, what does that mean? What, I don't understand, how do you get there?
If you had, if you had 100%, that is, you would be able to pay the retirement of all your current retirees, and when all your current employees retired, you'd be able to pay their pension as well. And you're still, so when we're talking about current employees, they're still, still going to be contribute, contributing, you're going to be contributing for them. There's going to be interest on that, and that kind of helps to the, why it doesn't need to be 100%.
Well, and so that's why I'm trying to make sure I'm, I'm completely understanding. There's a percentage or a calculation that we use to say, this is how much the city is supposed to pay. But it is never going to be our responsibility to make the pension fund 100% funded. That is not, it's a, it's the investments as well as our contributions that get us there. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand what, what percentage of that basically is our responsibility.
Well, so when, when they talk about 100% funded, I mean, clearly, we're not going to make all those pension payments now. So that, that's really, it's relying on projections of what's going to happen in the future, in the future with retirements and disability and pension payout, but it's also relying on projections of what's going to happen in the future with earnings on the funds that you have invested. So, I mean, to that extent, it's a little, there's a little bit of speculation there.
Mary Alice?
So if I'm understanding correctly, is it the IMRF who decides what amount we need to contribute every year per person? Has the city ever not paid that?
I, I don't think it's an option to not pay that.
Okay.
With IMRF, our current rate is, I think it's around 12%. So we pay in 12% of all the pay. We pay our employees who are enrolled in IMRF.
So we have to. We're obligated. It's not like the state that doesn't necessarily pay into our pensions.
No, we're, we're.
We are, we have to, right? And so it's not that we're not paying our bills.
Let me just say, I've never considered not doing it, so I've never really looked into it. But yes, I believe we have to.
Okay. So, so that said, when we're talking, and perhaps this is for a future discussion on pensions, but when we're talking about funding pensions at a higher percentage, does that mean in addition to the employee contributions that we have to do every single month per employee, we also provide lump-sum money into these pension funds to get us closer to 100%?
Well, so we're talking about two very different kinds of pension funds. So IMRF is a pension, pension fund that holds money for cities all across the state, and they manage that money. Whereas police and fire pension funds are managed by boards, which are made up of appointees who are appointed by the mayor, as well as people that are elected from the current members and, and a retiree who is elected by the retirees. And they manage that money, and they make the investment decisions. So it's a very, it's a very different way of doing this.
No, I get that. I, I do, I get that. So, so perhaps I was using the wrong phrasing. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, if we decide to increase our contribution to the fire and police fund, that would be basically lump-sum money that we are pouring into that specific pension fund. It's not an increase per employee, because we're already, we're already meeting that obligation.
Right. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Dennis?
And I guess maybe, I don't know if this is going to be for the Mirror or for you, Elizabeth, but do we foresee perhaps, are, are you expecting that there's going to be a, a, a time period coming up where there's going to be multiple retirements because of the perhaps age of police and fire department employees that we might want to be concerned about, or have the retirement applications or, that, that are being experienced by the city pretty even?
It, it varies a lot from year to year for both police and fire. But one of the things that our actuary does when he makes the calculations about how well-funded we are and how much we should contribute, is he makes those projections for us based on a lot of statistical data that he has related to that. And so we rely, we rely on that statistical data that he uses in his projections. We don't really talk about, gosh, next year, I think, you know, Person A and Person B are going to retire in the year after Person C. We don't really worry about that kind of detail level.
Okay. Bill?
I know you aren't going to be talking about police and fire pension funds specifically, because we probably don't have much to say about that, except to approve the board. So as long as we're on it, I noticed that even though the asset allocation between, between the two is pretty similar, there was a pretty big difference in performance. It's like 13% versus 7%, something like that. And one of them, well, both of them actually seemed like they were doing pretty well with their equities, and they were a little bit above the 65% maximum. So at some point, are they required to rebalance that to bring it back down below the 65%? And then for the police, I think they also had some private equities. And there's a limit for 5% in any one company, but I didn't know, we don't know, you know, how many companies that is. Do you look at that and tell us whether it was over 5% for any one company?
There's certain, there are certain disclosures, credit, credit risk being one of them. If, if there is a, if concentration of credit risk, if you are over 5% in a given stock, we, we are to disclose that. So that would be included in the financial statements, in the notes to the financial statements, yes. I could go to there, but it sounds like you've, you've looked at that. It's in note 3A. There's a, a few pages on, on the investments. Page 52 talks about concentration of credit risk. And the different government securities that, that are over 5%. There were no stocks or anything in particular. Outside of that, there were over 5% or any other investments subject to disclosure. They're not all subject to disclosure. If you had U.S. Treasuries, those aren't considered for this disclosure, because they're considered safe.
Okay. I didn't, okay, I thought that was just for the city, so that includes police pension in there?
Yeah, I think that, that's the entire, it, there's not, there's not a police and fire section to it, because there wasn't any applicable investments.
Okay. Thank you.
So on the, kind of, just to close out the, the police and fire pension, the, the police pension at 65%, that, that is a, that's in about an average number for what we see in plans around the state, for what, when we come out and do audits. And then in the fire pension fund, you're at 83.5% funded, which is, which is above average for what we, what we see. So that's, that's, it's a good, good percentage. It's close to IMRF. The, in, for fiscal year 2018, at an accounting standard that'll come on, on board, and it'll put the other post-employment benefit payable onto your financial statements, your statement of position, like the net pension liability. And what this is, this is insurance that you pay for, for retirees after, well, when they retire. So insurance that you cover for them, or if they're still on the plan, the implicit, you know, that your insurance costs more because you have retirees on your plan, that liability will be on your books next year. It'll be something we'll be talking about during that implementation, but between the actuary and us, we'll be able to, we'll implement that.
And, and we do not pay health insurance premiums for retirees. They pay. But as Joe indicated, there's an implicit subsidy, because having those retirees on our plan drives up our rate, because we're, we're adding into our group people who would generally have a less, have a worse experience, if you will, in terms of their use of health insurance.
So the, the remaining of the, the CAFR is, is some additional budget actual schedules, additional fund schedules, and some statistical schedules, which give you a good 10-year history of, of financial position of the city, and gives you good, good trend information. So that is all I was going to go over on the CAFR, unless there were any other questions. The Communication to Those Charged with Governance and Management. This, this report, it satisfies a few audit standards that we have. And the, the first one is Communication of Internal Control Deficiencies. So when we come in to do the audit, we look at the internal controls of the city to plan our tasks, the nature, timing, and extent of them. Not to give you, not to give an opinion on internal controls, but if, if something, as we're going through internal controls, something that we feel should be reported to the board, or potentially could have, could lead to a material statement of the financial statements, we're required to report those in this report. On page one, that is the, you can see the breakdown of the different weaknesses. So we have material weaknesses, which said those could, could lead to material statements of the financial statements, and that's external financial reporting. And then significant deficiencies, which are, are less severe than, than material weaknesses, but we still feel they're important enough to, to report to council. I want to point out that last year, there was a, there was a fourth comment in the significant deficiencies, but additional compensating controls put in by the Finance Department helped mitigate that risk, and it's, it's no longer reported in this letter. And I, as a general comment, we do see the comments going down, or, you know, to the best that they can with the staffing and the general ledger package in place, the Finance Department looks at our comments, and they really try to put in layers of controls to help mitigate weaknesses that, that we kind of point out to them. The, these, so the, the comments that are remaining, they're, they're consistent with what you've seen in the past, with the exception of some, some additional compensating controls that have been put in by the city. There is management's responses also with the comments. You can see, you can see what management thinks of the comments, or how, what other controls they have in place. I wasn't going to go over the comments specifically. I certainly can, if you want to do that. But since they've been repeated, I think a lot of them with the implementation of finance, new finance system, there may be tweaks, or they may go away from the report as well. I think there's, there's a lot of good opportunity for that.
So I would like to.
Karen?
The segregation of duties, the three things that you listed, I'd like for you to just expound upon them a little bit, why you listed them and what the concerns are.
Sure. Okay. So in general segregation duties, if one person does multiple aspects of a process, there's opportunities for error or. there's opportunities for error or fraud. This isn't to say that we found anything related to that, but just to point that out, that it's a potential. The first one being payroll, where the same individual is responsible for changing pay rates, benefits, updating time records, and processing payroll. So that, so that one person is heavily involved in the process. Now, there's good compensating controls after those pieces have taken place, so that's why it's not a material weakness or, or something to that extent. But there are, so, so after the fact, there's lots of good reviews of reports and, and time information, so we feel that a material in the statement wouldn't get through, get through those eyes, but since there is the, technically, you know, this kind of weakness in the system, we are required to report it. It's, and it is at a very, you are, the standards for what we look at for auditing for internal controls, it doesn't change from the City of Urbana to Apple. So they're at a very high structured level, so it doesn't take into consideration your resources available to have one person doing this part, and then the next person, and the next person. So you do the best you can with the staff you have to, to put on layers of controls. But there still is the opportunity for errors, so we, so we report that.
Yeah, I, I would say, I, I think all three of these, including the payroll one, really come back to issues with our current financial system and our ability to build controls into the system. So for example, on payroll, there's one person making all those changes in rates and benefits and, and doing all of those things, which is not ideal, but in our current financial system, our HR staff doesn't have access to do those things. And so you'll see in the new system, when we go live, HR will be controlling all the salaries and benefits that are assigned to employees, and the payroll people will be paying them, but they won't be able to change those rates of pay. So, I mean, the opportunity, I suppose, would be that, you know, if our payroll person was dishonest and nobody caught it in all the checking that we do, you know, they could decide to increase their own or somebody else's, you know, pay rate to some wild amount. So we, we put the controls in place that we can, but a lot of these are going to be addressed by the new system.
Without getting into a bunch of detail, I appreciate just the, the basic understanding and knowing what our resources are and what we're able to, to actually do. The standard is the same regardless of what the corporation or entity is, and I, and I respect that. I was just asking because if my memory serves me remotely correctly, I know we had some concerns over the past few years prior to you coming on, and it sounds like maybe some of those things from a structural standpoint haven't changed much. And so I was just kind of curious about that, so, but I can speak to you later about that.
Okay.
Well, what I'm saying is that for me, to be as clear as possible, there were some concerns that we had in the past about things not being done appropriately, and part of the checks and balances, if I remember correctly, were in relationship to not being enough eyes on payroll in some of those different places. And now what you're explaining is that basically it's still one person in the initial space, but there are more checks and balances in that middle phase. So I understand better now. So that's what I was trying to say.
Mary Ellis?
Just along the lines of the new financial system, two of the things in the information technology control environment are directly applicable to that as well. So formal review of access to financial accounting systems completed once a year is one, and then, or, I'm sorry, is number two. And then the fourth one is all financially impacted applications should have a login and password, which is unique to every user. So I'm curious if the implementation of the new financial software will address those two issues.
So the, the new financial system will have a complete audit trail on all changes to any kind of security or access to the system, actually it has a complete audit trail on pretty much everything. So yes, we'll have a log of all changes.
Is there, I'm sorry, but this is actually reviewing the access that people have rather than seeing what changes they've made in the system. I'm just wondering if the city has any way of auditing the access to our computer systems right now, currently. I'm not saying if we don't, it would just be something to look into.
I, I don't know that I can answer that question.
That's fine.
I can tell you what we'll have in the new system, but I don't know.
That's fine.
But yes, well, every user will have a unique login and password in the new system. There have been some cases where we've had to do some workarounds currently. So for example, in the approval process for accounts payable, we've actually had to create a unique user ID to be used for cutting checks in order to segregate duties better, which is just a kind of wacky workaround. But in the new system, we'll have very complete control over, you know, who can do what, and we can make sure that only the appropriate people can do some of those things.
I just wanted to say thanks for the very readable format, and it was really not only good from a financial perspective, but also kind of overview of our, our situation and the economy and everything, and, and over time. But I, I wanted to just point out a couple of little things, like on page 143 toward the end, we list principal employers, and it looks like that's all county, so those are, these are the top employers in the county, not in the city. And the percentage of total city employment should probably be the percentage of total county employment, and we're just assuming that the people in the city were basically in these regional employers at a similar rate.
Yeah, I mean, that was the best data that we could get for that section.
So maybe, would it make sense just to put a footnote that, I mean, it says the source is Champaign County EDC, but the, the heading of that column says percentage of total city employment, and it'd be better to just describe that as it's actually the percentage of county employment, or, or in the footnote, making the assumption that the city employment is roughly equivalent. I mean, the only one that really I know that would be different would be Urbana schools, because I happen to know that about half the employees in Urbana schools live in Urbana. So it's probably more like, you know, it's a couple percentage points higher. That's a small thing, but it's just, you know, that's something you look at. And just point out that over the last, the, the page opposite that, over the last 10 years, we've gone from 276 employees to 271.9 employees. So for people that complain about the growth of big government, it's, it's not us, we've actually gone down by four employees over 10 years. The other thing, just, I'd point out to the city, or to the mayor, I guess, on the organizational chart, and this has been like this for years, we still list downtown redevelopment commission, and maybe we'll reinvigorate that, but I don't think we've had one for quite a while. I don't know.
We're gonna, we're gonna update that chart for the budget for the coming year.
And, and, you know, maybe with your present, maybe with your presentation, you want to look at reinvigorating, something like that, but yeah, I was trying to figure out what that was, and I found an ordinance that was created in 1974 and like disappeared somewhere in the 90s, maybe Charlie remembers that, but yeah, so that's the only things, thanks.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does the clerk have any public input cards? Okay. I have one. We have one input card from Bishop King James Underwood. He does not wish to address members of the council, but he's continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And then I have two other cards that are from people who want to address the council at the time of the agenda item. Unfinished business? Okay, reports of the committee of the whole, council member Eric Jacobson.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I move passage of ordinance number 2018-01-001, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter 24, Section 2449, reimbursement for sanitary sewer repairs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Aaron, and we'll take public input now. Dr. Evelyn Underwood?
May I speak after they, we, are they going to present?
No, this is a vote, yes. There will be discussion, but would you like to address the council?
Mayor Marlin, I'm not going to say my name. After the last meeting, we had an opportunity to speak with staff and other committee members for clarification. And we see that the ordinance did not change Section 24 and the definitions, so it did not, it does not meet what we asked the Dr. Ellis petition. So my, I, I am, and a lot of other people are in opposition to what is being presented and what is being voted on tonight. And I'll just stop there.
I have a card from Eldress Melinda Carr. Good evening.
I'm here to, Eldress Melinda Carr, here to, just to reiterate that the petition that the Dr. Ellis subdivision committee presented, we still stand on the petition and are, that the action should be that the city, the city should take total financial responsibility for sewer problems on city property, and at the core of this petition is that the sewer funds be set aside for this purpose, and not put the financial burdens on residents for repairs beyond their property line within the city's right-of-way and on the other residents' private property, and paying for the repairs upfront. So that is the, at the core of it, paying upfront, that the residents have to pay, the homeowners have to pay upfront the costs for the sewer repairs. And looking at the amended ordinance, some of the things I wasn't sure about, and one thing, remember Dr. Underwood mentioned the definition hasn't changed, and what does it, what does it mean by one time? Is that during the year or the lifetime of a sewer repair, a homeowner can come back again? So one time, what does that mean? And so with this amended ordinance, the homeowner still bears full responsibility and pays for access on their property and beyond their property in the city's right-of-way, and this is unfair. Even within a reimbursement program, homeowners are forced to bear the full responsibility of paying for repairs upfront, while the city is permitted to make the final decision when it is deemed the homeowner has not followed their specific repair guidelines. And so clarify for me if, for example, Joe Lewis, who came to the council a few years ago and did pipe bursting, others who, who claimed they, their repairs did not meet the eligibility requirements, can he still be reimbursed under this new ordinance? There are different types of repairs that may not be covered in this ordinance that need to be explained to homeowners. You know, the rear, there's the rear lot, the front yard connection, the front lot connection, the long and the short. What happens in cases of a root blockage due to sewer connections, failure of the connection that just crushed, and that happened to me in 2015, and that's one of the reasons why I'm here, because I moved there, and that happened to me in the house that I moved in. I was sent there on a mission to be part of this committee. And so there seems to be no requirement that the sewer has to be in, in the middle of the street, but why is it that homeowners are being the full responsibility of paying costs for sewer repairs? And those homeowners who are living on the south side in Dr. Ellis will still pay an equitable amount upfront compared to other homeowners. Why is it that developers do not have to follow critical standards when constructing a home for placement of sewer laterals or pipes, and planting trees on the property that has been inspected by the city? Unless I missed something in the city code, these kind of practices have existed over the years. I can understand why the public works department may not want to maintain all of the city's infrastructure. The city does not track the sewer lateral placement, but legally has access to the pipe to do the work. The homeowners can walk into a cesspool of underground construction without the knowledge that they could be facing expensive repairs in the future. Something must be done to rebuild the sanitary sewer infrastructure process, operations, so that sewer funds are set aside in the best interest of the people. What has happened over the years to cause this breakdown of this process?
You have 30 seconds.
And to make it more of a commercial enterprise. 30 seconds. Somebody want to give me a little bit more time?
Move for more time.
Second.
Thank you. Critical standards for developers are not in place. From my understanding, the city does not keep track of where the sewer lateral is, as was in my case, what happened, and the tree was on top of the lateral and had been crushed, and trying to find where the lateral was and digging over, trying to find out, realized it was under the tree, because someone who had worked in the house before said it's under the tree, so trying to find out where the lateral was. I ended up having to pay for, of course, the part of my property, and thank God I was on the side that was the shorter end, not the longer end, where I would have to pay more money. And residents who may not be able to afford that, and they may be not, may not be in a place where they could afford the, may be, may not be in the income guidelines for a grant, but they may be in a place where they can't get a loan, and they can't afford to pay $10,000 or whatever the cost may be in that, in that case. But they have to pay it upfront. The city may reimburse, but the, the homeowner still has to come up with that amount. I had just moved there, and so I was already in, you know, just paid loan to get the house, you know, taken care of, closed on the loan, and I would have had other costs, you know, that I had to pay upfront and get another loan from the bank. So we have to think about other situations that may happen with a homeowner, if they're on the other side of the street, which I was on the short end, and I was blessed to be able, you know, to have that money available. And so the tree, the city took care of the tree that was crushing the, the lateral. The, the city paid for the tree. I didn't pay for it, and we had a meeting. So there are other things that, details I'm not going to go into tonight. So looking at some of these things, how, how blockages such as tree roots can be handled, who would be responsible when this happens, again, to a homeowner. So one time, what does that mean? There are currently many, many homeowners with, with, in residence with trees and possible root damage. I looked at the city code related to trees. I couldn't see what the code, how the code spoke to this type of thing, and maybe it's something I missed, but I'm just bringing this up for the council to look at and review. So those are my comments related to the amended ordinance tonight.
Thank you. Council discussion? Eric?
So my impression...
So my impression is that the unit price for going across the city property should correct the inequity of the main sewer line being on one side of the street or the other, because we'll reimburse more if you have to go a longer distance across, or if the project has to go a longer distance across city property than if you're lucky, as you were, and for the main to be on your side. So I think that this ordinance rectifies that situation. I agree that it doesn't rectify the situation, and I guess we've really had legal opinion that we can't do it, we can't put the money out upfront, because we would, in effect, be, the city would be contracting for the work, and then we get into some issues that would, that would make the work cost much more. I guess one of the questions I have, since the, I don't think it's, you know, it's being a little uncomfortable, I guess, to take a home equity loan for, you know, small reasons, but this is a fairly big reason, and one could be sure of being reimbursed for the amount and being able to pay it off. Is it not feasible, I guess I wonder, to do a home equity loan for the upfront cost? I don't remember that this point came up in council discussion before, and I guess the answer is that we, okay, nobody's leaping up and saying, oh, we know the answer to that.
Aaron.
So it's a lot here for me to unpack, but first I would say that I really, again, really appreciate all of the consistent raising of the issue by Dr. Ellis subdivision, in particular, the three of you who come every Monday, rain, sleet, or snow, or super cold weather, as long as your health permits it. And as a representative of Ward Three, seeing the organizing, the petitions, and everything that you guys have done over the years in relationship to this issue, I will be voting in a way that represents the, my constituents in particular, and the issues that you have raised. Now, I am appreciative of staff and the city leadership who's done just about everything they can, what we think we can do to address this issue, 3,000 to 5,000, to now the program that we have in place. But fundamentally, one of the issues that Dr. Underwood raised last week, I believe, was that it's just not fair, or it's not as easy as some may think to come up with $5,000, $10,000, or $15,000 upfront. And you may not have the ability to get the loan. So I appreciate your comments, though, Eric. If the homeowners, if these are actual homeowners who are being affected, and even if it's not a homeowner, then the landlord could possibly do something with a home equity loan. Maybe that's an option that is somewhat pursuable for some people, depending on their credit ratings and all that type of stuff. And I appreciate you trying to think outside the box to try to come up with something. I, too, am trying to think about a community benefit agreement or some sort of partnership with a lending institution with the city that would allow for something like that to take place. Because I do see, from a steward standpoint, it's difficult to say that we're going to pay 100% up, well, we can't do that upfront, and then have the same concerns that we have for other places in the city that have similar, if not very identical, concerns as we see in Dr. Ellis subdivision. So there was a question raised about can Mr. Lewis be reimbursed at this particular point? I'd like for an answer, I'd like an answer to that question, if we could, please. I don't know who would take that. Would that be Bill?
In the case of pipe bursting, and at the time, or at the time it was done and under this proposed program, that there wasn't any part of this program that would allow for reimbursement for that. While it did save the homeowner from remove, having to remove pavement and replace it and those costs, that there just wasn't a mechanism in place through this program to, for the reimbursement of that work. So the answer in that case would be no.
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I'm not 100% clear on what happened in Mr. Lewis's case, but did Mr. Lewis have to dig up, pay to dig up city right-of-way or the street or anything like that?
As I understand it, no. The, there may have been a portion of sidewalk, but I haven't seen that, you know, that, I don't know if there even was a right-of-way permit for that. And we don't have an application form for any of that work. But in the case of pipe bursting, it would have been digging a hole on either end of the street, or either side of the street, and essentially putting a new pipe inside that old pipe, and which would help to avoid the need to remove and replace this street pavement.
So I guess from our perspective, and if I'm representing this correctly, it doesn't matter whether it was a pipe bursting or a pipe collapsing or trees or whatever, if the homeowner had to dig up any portion of the city property and they live in Dr. Ellis subdivision, why would, even if it was, if the program wasn't in place at that particular point, we have identified it as a concern now, why wouldn't they qualify for that reimbursement?
I mean, if there were, the program would not, I mean, there was no program in place to provide that reimbursement for that reason. The program as it, depending on when that, or the year that was done, the program would have provided a certain amount based on the cost of, solely the cost of pavement replacement and, or removal and replacement. So if there was no pavement removal done, then there'd be no, nothing to reimburse for in that case.
I mean, I can understand if there was nothing that was done on the city right-of-way. I can understand the point there. And to be fair, I do think that there's, we can't go back and make it retroactive to everyone who had to do some particular work like that and reimburse everybody. Or we could, I guess, if we wanted to, as a city. The other thing was, this, I don't know who would take this one, but we discussed this a little bit offline last week about the homeowner, in this case Eldridge Carr or anybody else, who has no idea of the infrastructure underneath. And if the city has knowledge that there is this type of concern for the people living on the south side, say for instance, of Tremont, or these, whatever street is in question, then wouldn't we be, to some degree, obligated to ask homeowners or the landlords to share that information with potential buyers or renters? Well, I guess buyers in particular, in this particular scenario?
That may be more of a legal question, as far as what we're obligated to, what information we're obligated to provide. But as far as the information that's available, as long as someone contacts the city, we're always more than happy to help them with any information we have, whether it's a report of, or previous reports of backups or sewer issues, or maybe we have a right-of-way permit that shows that their lateral was replaced recently, then we'd be happy to share that information.
Well, I want to be clear then, because maybe it is a legal question, the way I phrased it, but I also want to phrase it from the standpoint of a policy standpoint for my fellow council members, that I believe it would be good policy in Urbana. In a situation like this, there's a reasonable amount of expectation for a homeowner to have to replace a roof or to even get weeds out of your lateral. But it is unreasonable to expect a homeowner to be surprised by having to learn that they have to dig up the sidewalk, the right-of-way, and the street, to get across the street to another lateral to correct a problem that's taking place on their property. I believe that is an unreasonable expectation for a homeowner, and I want us to pass a policy, write something in relationship to that, to notify homeowners who may be, who would seek to home, to own a home in one of the streets like that in the city of Urbana. And maybe that's a broader conversation for a later time, but I would want us to work on something like that as a reasonable request. That's it for me.
I'm processing that. Are you talking about prospective buyers or current homeowners? You want them notified where their sewer laterals are?
In the ideal sense, both.
Mary Allison, then Eric.
All right. I'll try and keep my questions very direct. So my first question is, does the city have anything that we require when somebody sells a home? Is there, are there any requirements that we say, you must disclose X, Y, and Z? Do we currently have anything like that?
Just state law.
Just state law? So right now we follow state law? Okay. My second question is, I'm not sure, I don't have it in front of me. What is the one-time thing? Is that, the question was, is it once a year, is it once a lifetime, once a house ownership?
So that is item number one. Reimbursement is limited to one time for any sanitary sewer lateral repair. That's per instance of repair. So it's essentially saying for this repair, we'll reimburse one time. We're not going to pay twice for any.
So if that sewer breaks again, you'll still pay two times?
If there were another repair needed.
If there was another, so let's say in January they fix it, they had bad contractors, and in July it broke again, and so they had to hire new contractors. Would the city pay that second time if it's a new instance?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. There are, there is language in here that would allow for the public works director or the mayor, mayors designate to, to change whether that payment is made, based on maybe a situation where it seems like someone's, something inappropriate has happened.
Okay. All right. And then I suppose, I mean, I don't think that, I know that everybody has spent a lot of time trying to figure this out, trying to figure out the most equitable way, and I know that one of the options was to increase every resident's tax by $6 per month, and the sewer benefit tax, I believe, to pay for the whole thing. I think this is a huge improvement in terms of what we have, and I really appreciate the staff's time. I appreciate the public's input and staying on top of this, and I think that this is a great step forward. I don't think it's perfect by any means, but I do think it is a huge step forward. So I'm in support of this.
Eric.
So just one more question for the public record. I assume that a prospective homeowner or a current homeowner could ask Public Works to come out and identify any trees that were potential hazards to the sanitary sewer?
The Public Works Department, we'd be happy to provide maps of the city's sanitary sewers, and we could look at how that relates to trees. What the, our Arbor Division, and our City Arborists will be quick to tell you, is that it often isn't the tree that's the problem, it's the condition of the pipe. The roots are looking for that water, so they're gonna, the roots will propagate through the cracks, and they won't create cracks themselves. So it, once that starts, it can become a whole jumbled mess, but in some cases, if it's a new tree that's placed on a lateral that's relatively shallow, then that could be an issue of a tree being smashed through it. But I think that the condition of the sanitary sewer lateral is something that would have to be determined by somebody other than the city.
Right. So there are two conditions that have to be met for a tree to create a problem. One is, of course, the existence of the tree and the roots being deep enough. And second, most likely that the sanitary sewer line itself is starting to deteriorate.
Correct.
And so you wouldn't have a catastrophic failure without the tree. You also wouldn't have a catastrophic failure without the deterioration of the sanitary sewer line, but you put both of them together, and there you are.
Jared, and Dennis.
Dennis.
Dennis, and then Jared.
Yeah, you went.
I know in the past, the city had a program of senior home repair assistance. It's not called that, but.
We have two programs, actually.
Right. I'm wondering, and I know that there are two homes in my neighborhood that received new roofs because of that, porch reconstruction, and other kinds of physical improvements to the home based on that. And I am not remembering well enough whether the repairs came, that there was a reimbursement rather than a grant to cover those repairs?
It's a grant. So actually, in those cases, if they meet the income guidelines, the city will pay for the repair directly.
Okay. So I'm wondering if we can use that, that program or that approach to handle these, some of these lateral connection repairs in the subdivision or for anyone who needs it, that it becomes a grant rather than a reimbursement program?
It depends on, it's a different source of funds. The emergency repair grant funds are CDBG HUD funds, and that is the reason the city can reimburse a contractor directly. The funds used for these sewer lateral repairs are from the sewer benefit tax, and we cannot, because that means the city would have to be paying prevailing wage, for example. So it's, it's because of the source of funds used for these grants.
So if you can repair your roof using CBGG funds, why can't you repair your sewer line?
You could if you qualified for the income levels.
So if that, if that's possible, can we offer this as a possible solution to some homeowners?
Yes, it is available.
It is available. So I don't know if that's known to the community at large. They know about it.
They don't qualify.
They don't qualify. Well, then that's one of the problems.
The other option we didn't mention lately is there is an insurance, there used to be insurance available, I think through the Water Company, and when I was getting the flyers, it was about $10 a month, and, pardon?
Most of the people got that, but they're not paying. Like you know the lead saying, you know, here, most of the people got that, but they're not doing what they're supposed to do. They're.
Okay. Well, I guess we could look into that insurance program, but there is apparently an insurance program available. Okay, Jared.
Justin, maybe, I don't know if you can discuss this, or if Bill Gray needs to, but can we just go over one more time feasibility standpoint of city taking 100% responsibility of sewer repairs? I know we've gone over it before. I don't know if you have that. What does that mean for the city? What would we have to do to actually raise the kind of money we would need to be responsible for those things?
So that would result in an increase to the sewer benefit tax. That's what that $6 figure is, and that's an approximation. So what that would allow the city to do is to purchase some of the equipment necessary upfront, but then as these issues come up, it would, the city would install a clean-out at the right-of-way, or at the property line, and then either replace the pipe or rehabilitate the pipe, the sewer lateral within the right-of-way. And that, so that would mostly cover under the paved areas, or all the paved areas within the city right-of-way. So that, that's something that we would likely contract out, as we do with our miscellaneous sewer repairs. And it would be on an as-needed basis and as funds are available. This wouldn't be something where you could just call the city and say you want a new lateral, like you could with a private contractor today. You would, it would be an as, you know, as deemed necessary by the Public Works Department.
So explain the $6? That's $6 per?
That number was $6 per month per average user, which would be, I think, $6,000, $7,000 gallons per month, and that's, that would be an increase to the sewer benefit tax.
So $6 per person per month?
Per household.
Per household. $6 per household per month. And that takes you from a position of reimbursement to a position of paying upfront? I thought, I thought that that was just to go from 95 to 100%.
No, that would not be for paying upfront. That would be the city hires the contractor to go out and do the work to rehabilitate or to replace that sanitary sewer lateral.
Okay. Maybe I'm, I'm misspeaking. Not that the city's doing it itself, but the city's paying for it upfront.
Correct.
It's just $6 per person per month?
Correct. But you, yes.
I'd like to add a little perspective to this. Are you finished?
Yeah, yeah, no, please.
Okay. I just want to remind people that the program was established in 2007 in response to concerns that were brought to the council. Currently households, the typical household pays about $4.50 per year. So in order to do what you were asking about, it would mean you would vote to increase that tax to about 72...
that tax to about $72 to $75 per year for every household. Now, the perspective things come into the play here when we think about, this is a tax that everybody currently pays, it's added on to your sewer benefit tax. Every single taxpayer is going to pay this tax, but very, very, very few people will ever use it. Last, we had 49 instances of public right-of-way being torn up and needing to be reimbursed under this program, 49 instances in a 10-year period. So this is a case where you have to think about, you know, the public benefit versus the, the public cost, and so that's, that's the numbers that we need to, that we need to think about. The program that we're about to vote on is extremely generous compared to most other cities in the state, that's for sure, probably in the country, especially with the unit pricing now. It's a very, it's a very fair and actually a relative, a very generous, generous program, but the thing to think about is $4.50 a year versus about $75 a year, and relatively five people per year would use it.
So, $450 per year?
$4.50 per year.
Okay, increase from 72?
To $72 per year.
To, to $72 per year?
Yes.
From $68 per year?
No.
I'm sorry, I'm missing, where are we at now?
$4.50 a year.
We're at $4.50.
And you would...
Instead, it would be $72.
Per year.
Per year.
For the average user.
Right, because it's $6 per month.
Mm-hmm.
Right, per household. I got you. So what I, I'm only just bringing this up for clarification, because I had a long discussion with the folks last week about what all this meant and what they were trying, the goal they were trying to accomplish, and the concern was, of course, as they've said, upfront reimbursement for people who can't afford to front the cost until they can be reimbursed for the city. And maybe, you know, I'm still going to support this. I think it's obviously way better than the situation we were in before, and maybe we can come up with a, I don't know, some kind of in-between. You know, maybe we could raise it somewhat where it doesn't go from $4.50 to $72, but we could increase it by some amount that people are reasonable. I didn't realize we could do it by ourselves, because I explained to them that if we were going to raise a tax unilaterally across the city, that I felt like that would need to be under, like, referendum, because I feel like voters would all want a chance to say, "Hey, yeah, raise our taxes, we want this benefit," or...
I'm, I'm sure they'll want a chance to weigh in on...
Yeah. So I, I told them I wouldn't be comfortable trying to raise a tax without obviously bringing it up and having a long session for public input for people to say, "Hey, we're willing to pay." I, I know I would. I mean, I, I can afford to say that I can afford 60 some odd more dollars in a year to add for the benefits that should disaster strike, and I have to pay for this portion, you know, it's there. So I would support it. But obviously, we would need much more public input, and I've told them, a next step they can take is to try and raise that issue as a public issue, to try and get support for people to come and, you know, tell us, "Hey, we want this benefit, we would, we would support this program. This is something, you know, we can, we can all get behind." So anyway, that's, that was, I'm just trying to understand the clarification of the increased cost for the city to assume responsibility.
And, and the program you're about to vote on addresses that emergency catastrophic situation?
Well, so what, what Dr. Underwood had explained to me is that there are a lot of folks who are just caught in that unfortunate gray area in between being low enough income to qualify for the $8,000 grant, and having too much income to not qualify for it, but not having the available funds to pay, pay for something like that upfront. I know I personally would struggle to pay for a $15,000 bill should I have to replace, replace that upfront. That would, that would be hard for me to do. And there are people, I'm sure, who don't qualify for the CBGG grants, who make too much but don't have that kind of savings just waiting around, so. They're trying to find some way to cover the people who are caught, unfortunately, between the two. I had one, I'm really sorry that, everybody else has got comments on this I can see, so...
Aaron?
I'm trying to, to understand, there was a distinction that was made that I was, I really hope that we could get clarified. So when a private contractor or somebody comes out to do the job, it costs X amount of dollars. If we have to pay prevailing wage, is there a way for us to share with the public and the members of Dr. Ellis and other folks who would be affected by this? What would the difference in cost would be for us? Is there a way to quantify that?
That would be hard to do. Private contractors aren't required to provide their, their wages. We could, we could come up with an estimate of what each repair would cost if we were to have one of the city contractors do it, that does pay prevailing wage, but each contractor is different. So, I mean, we could take, we could try to do an average of what the, and that's kind of what we've done here with the unit prices, is what is the average contractor going to charge for a certain amount? And then we could apply, you know, those same quantities to what we've, projects that we've bid out and those similar things, so we could, we could look at that.
So we, I mean, we could do a back-of-a-napkin type of thing if it was necessary. I'm just trying to get an idea, let's say for instance, just hypothetically speaking, if the, if the mobilization or Brick Street pavement square yard is $400 a price, a unit price for the private, that's just the, the number for the, the pavement, but then there's the, the labor per hour is what we're talking about, that would be different. And that's, on average, going to be $5 more an hour, $10 more an hour? Is there any way for us to, because the reason why I say it is because it was offered as a reason why it wouldn't be a, we would have to pay more if we contracted out. So even the notion of possibly raising a tax would still result in us paying prevailing wage, right?
Correct.
Right, so there's even more of a cost for everyone in association with that, because the city's coffers are the citizens' coffers, right? You know, so we would, and, even though we would be asking folks to pay more, we would end up paying the, the contractors more because we'd have to pay prevailing wage. It doesn't seem to be adding up to me, so I was trying to get an understanding as to what the difference may be for prevailing wage and what we have estimated per unit cost and stuff. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I just, I see that there's a difference there that we should make sure that we understand, or that, that I would want even the folks at Dr. Ellis subdivision to understand the difference in that.
Okay, and so, Bill just mentioned, we would expect labor costs to be 20 to 30% higher for paying prevailing wage versus what a private contractor would pay. Another thing to, to keep in mind is that when we bid out unit prices for certain quantities of different items, and, and for instance, under our miscellaneous sewer repair contract, those prices are good for two years. Private contractors is likely going to take a different approach to developing a price for that sewer repair, and it, it really will be based on their availability and how much they need the work. They may be willing to, to do the project for less just to keep their people busy and keep money coming in the door, whereas, you know, the city is kind of locked into certain prices. So, again, it's, it's something that we can, we can look at averages, but, you know, as, as Bill said, we would expect 20 to 30% higher labor costs.
I have one quick question. I promise.
Mary Alice.
Thank you. So if I remember correctly, the CDBG funds are 50% of the median household income that you would qualify for an $8,000 grant, is that correct? So I just Googled it, and the median household income is $25,651 in Urbana. So that would mean that somebody, in order for them to qualify for the $8,000 grant, would need to earn basically $12,500.
John Schneider has them.
I'll just give you the, the sheet.
There you go. That works.
She, I'll answer, maybe you answer your question.
24,000, there we go.
So that's 50%. So that, that would be...
50% of that.
That's, no, that's 50% of MFI. So MFI is 48, 48.7.
So does that mean that you would qualify if you earned $24,350?
Correct.
Okay.
Or less.
Or less, yes. And then if you had, that's for a family size of one. So if you have a family size of four, then you qualify if you earn $34,750. So it looks like there's a little handout, nice handout for people who are interested.
Yeah, I think that's on the website also, is it correct, John?
And one, one last bit of context, because I'm, I'm all about context. If you look at the map, the council in your packet and on the web showed a map where all the actual reimbursements for these kinds of repairs have been made over the last nine or 10 years. The vast, of the 49 reimbursements that have been made, the vast majority, when you look at your map, you'll see that they are either in West Urbana or East Urbana, directly the city building, and that makes sense because that's where the pipes are the oldest. Old pipes are going to have the most problems. In the Dr. Ellis subdivision, there were a total of two sanitary sewer excavation right-of-way permits issued in the past nine years. One of those repairs did get a reimbursement pavement. The second repair was eligible but has not yet replied, or applied, and that homeowner can still apply if they would like the reimbursement. So, so in the Dr. Ellis subdivision, there have been just two pavement repairs that apply, that would be reimbursed under this program. There may be a lot of blocked sewer laterals, but that's a completely different story, and I think that's what people are sometimes confusing this program for. So this is for pavement repairs, and there have just been two up in Dr. Ellis and a whole lot east and west of the city building. So I think it's time to call for a vote unless there's any other pressing questions. Is this a roll call vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Sammons.
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen? Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. Reports of special committees. Charlie?
I'll just let council know that the UCTB, the big broadband project, has completed its first round of community benefit fund applications and funding. I think 100 and, roughly $115,000 is being given to qualified organizations, and I can, I probably should send you a copy of the press release, which I will try to do tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other reports of special committees? Next, we have reports of officers. Mayor's Institute on City Design, Lincoln Square Vision, Mayor Marlin.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're back to hear this, Dennis. How, why am I here at this point in time? Well, as you know, we've been talking about sale of the Landmark Hotel, which is part of the 16-acre Lincoln Square site for the past three or four years, and as a result, I personally have been spending an enormous amount of time looking at the site, thinking about the site, and over the course of that time, it occurred to me that instead of focusing on individual components of Lincoln Square, which is a nine-square block, about 16-acre site in the heart of our downtown, we might, at this point, be better off thinking about the site as a whole, for a number of reasons, because we're at some, we're at a critical juncture, there's, there's a lot of critical junctures in this site at this point. So as I was mulling that over, especially last fall, and especially since moving into my office here, I'm staring at this site every single day, I received an invitation to attend a program sponsored by the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the National Endowment for the Arts, and it's called the Mayor's Institute on City Design. It's been around for over 30 years, over 1,100 mayors have participated in this, but this is a program whereby invitation, about seven or eight mayors are invited to attend a two-day, two-and-a-half-day workshop in various cities around the country. These workshops are coordinated usually by a Department of Architecture or Planning, funded by the U.S. Conference of Mayors and NEA, and they invite mayors to attend with all expenses paid. So no public funds were involved in this trip, and that was what clinched it for me. So I thought this would be a great opportunity to bring a civic design challenge, and so I chose the Lincoln Square site as my design challenge, and it gave me the opportunity to meet with other mayors, but more importantly, to meet with a team of architects, landscape architects, planners, transportation planners, and it was essentially a brainstorming session. So at the session, we presented, each of us mayors presented a case study, and they had 45 minutes to an hour of discussion about it, and then a whole lot of opportunities to talk with people one-on-one. So I wanted, tonight, I wanted to share with you a shortened version of what I presented in the workshop, some of the recommendations or reactions from the expert panel, and then where we want to go from here, because from here, we've decided it's time to open the conversation up with the community. So, so this is the beginning of, of what I hope will be a very long process to really let us envision this very important site in our downtown. I will say that the headline in the paper was not quite accurate. There is no plan right now. This is the beginning of a process that ultimately could result in a wonderful plan, so. What's, what, why are we here at this point? Well, as I said, we have a 16-acre site, non-square, nine square blocks, several things that have happened recently. The Landmark Hotel is closed, it's for sale. Health Alliance and the Carl Human Resources Department are vacating the office space that they rent in the mall, which is about 100,000 square feet with 800 employees. The MCOR project, which is a multi-year, $47 million construction project, will rebuild Green Street. The first part of that was done this year. The last phase of that in a couple of years will rebuild Green Street from Bucy to Race. So Green Street will become the main corridor from campus, from Lincoln Avenue, to our downtown, and it will deliver people right about a block away, smack dab at Lincoln Square. Over the course of the past year, I talked with a lot of people and listened to a lot of people, and people are very interested in talking about Lincoln Square. That topic came up spontaneously in a lot of conversations, partly driven by the discussion about the hotel, but partly because people just seem to like talking about Lincoln Square and what they'd like to see there, and, and what they like about it and what they don't. So, you know, I would hear things about desire for more housing, more activity downtown, more life in this area, and I, I think we're at a point where we need to be actively seeking that. The city of Urbana is also about to undergo, get a city facility planning and a programming needs assessment underway. We're looking at what our space needs are, how people work together, where we can accommodate and for the programs and services for the future. So, so that's underway, and I know, I've read in the paper, that other public entities may be looking for new space as well. So lots of things just kind of converged on this point, and the invitation to go to Indianapolis arrived, and I said, "I'm going to take it." So, here's the study site I brought to Indy, just as a reminder, and the, one of the benefits of doing this exercise is I, I spend a whole lot of time looking at things from above rather than from ground level, and it's amazing that, what a difference in perspective makes. So on this site, and again, it's nine square blocks, we have three separate owners, through two individuals, one individual owns the hotel, another individual owns the mall, and by the way, the mall owner, Mr. Webster, is very supportive of our, of our visioning efforts and our efforts to engage the community. And then the public, the city owns most of the surface parking on this site, which is about seven to eight acres. All the parking, except the lot directly west of the hotel, is owned by the public, plus several parking, a parking lot south of Illinois Street. So the city has a very important stake in this site as well, which is why we also have a, you know, an obligation, I think, to think about the future of this site. Transit is nearby. When you, when you start to look at the, the, the site here and its position relative to the university, we're just a few blocks from the university, almost equidistant to the Carl Hospital campus, located near transit, on-street, kind of like an on-street transit center here, the library, the courthouse, this historic post office building, the federal courthouse, the Methodist Church, which by last count now has four different congregations using it. So we, this site is just critical in terms of its location, and it could be a very, much more vibrant and lively and a much bigger center of activity than it is now. And it's just ideally located for all sorts of things to happen, and it's very close to population centers and the population as a whole. It also, of course, is in our central Tiff district, it's Enter... It also, of course, is in our central Tiff district, it's enterprise zone, City Hall is right across the street, and it's just a couple blocks from Main Street. So it's a great location. Another way to look at it, we, from above, the three components of the site are the, major components are the hotel, the Lincoln Square Mall, and then acres of parking. So take a look at each of those components briefly, and then talk about some of the ideas that came out of the workshop. The Lincoln Hotel is a local historic landmark. It was originally, the original part of the hotel was built in 1924. It's, of course, designed by Joseph Royer, and it was strategically located at the intersection of Broadway and Green. And I'm gonna keep coming back to these two crossroads here because I think that, that's a very important intersection. So the star here, keep those stars in mind, that's the corner of Broadway and Green. This is the corner of Broadway and Green. So the front facade of the hotel, the front door of the hotel opened on to this very important intersection. And Broadway Street itself is a very wide street, hence the name, I think. The original site was your typical grid, street network that we see in West Urbana and in East Urbana. And here's the, here's the Diana's, well, it was the Eisner Store, the Diana's Grocery Store down here. So when the hotel was built, probably the most significant, or when, when the mall was built, the most significant change of the hotel, of course, is that the, the front facade was enveloped or buried by the mall, and that intersection of Broadway and Green suddenly became, went inside the mall. And so the connectivity, north, south, east and west, was, was stopped at that point by the mall. And the back door of the hotel, by necessity, had to become the front door, and of course, the, oops, the front door opened into, into the interior of the mall. Today, the hotel has had multiple owners, again, here's that Broadway and Green intersection. Juma's Edition was built in 1982. There were two foreclosures in the 2000s. The current owner purchased the hotel in 2010 for 600, I think it was 660, actually. He received city incentives, has repaid the city. The hotel closed in 2015. The auction on December 11th of 2017 did not result in a sale, and a bid of 3.95 million was rejected by the owner. But that's the, the current state of the hotel today. Lincoln Square Mall was built in 1960, or opened in 1964 with the anchor tenant of Carson Perry Scott, who also invested a fair amount of money in the hotel, or in the mall itself. So they were an anchor store as well as an investor. The architect was Victor Gruen, who's actually very well-known in the United States as a mall designer, and this was one of the first enclosed downtown malls in the country. It's on the National Register of Historic Places, and again, it enveloped the front facade of the hotel. So today, there's a mixture of current tenants, it's not as, when the mall opened, it was, of course, heavily retail, it was a vibrant retail center. And I came here to school in 1971, and you could get anything you needed in Lincoln Square Mall. And that's what people remember, you know, a lot about the mall. Currently, the healthcare tenants occupy by the vast, by far the most square footage of any single tenant, and their lease ends in June of 2018, this year. Other tenants, you know, law firms, various types of entertainment and services and activities. And because the hours of this building are extraordinarily long, it's, it also becomes a place for people to, to exercise and to do various other things as well. So just a floor plan, kind of floors plan, typical mall layout. It's also a site for many events because it's, the hallways are, are large and tall, and there's a fair amount of space. So you have events like Read Across America, Market in the Square, it said walkers, and, and even dancers. This couple, I see this couple frequently dancing in the mall. Some thriving businesses, including the Art Coop and the new Spark Museum and Play Cafe, the Common Ground Food Co-op are there as well. But again, I keep going back to connectivity, which is, I guess, what you get when you keep looking at things from above. But this, this, again, is your original, Broadway Street is your major north-south connectivity, and, and if you follow Broadway to the south, you run right into the hotel, or the high school, middle school, aquatic center campus. And so that anchors that into the access, if you go north, you're running through downtown, right up to Crystal Lake Park. So I think that was, that was, I think, the original part of the plan for that street is that it's a major connecting access. And of course, east-west, Green Street connects east and west Urbana. So what you're, and, and this kind of gives you another perspective on, on Broadway Avenue and, and, and the, and, well, past and future, perhaps. But what's interesting is, and I put this picture in here, is because people are, sometimes, you know, you can see where the trails in the snow are, that tells you where to build your sidewalks. Well, people are riding bikes through the mall. And I didn't believe this when people told me, but then I went to take pictures in the mall, and sure enough, these folks actually are walking, are walking their bikes through, and they're older folks, but I did see younger kids as well, just entering the door down here and zipping right through and going out the north door. So I tend to think, sometimes we ought to listen and see what people are doing and how they're using a property, and that informs us how perhaps we ought to think about using a property. Same way with the east-west. This is Green Street, east of the city building, looking toward the west. This is probably one of the best perspectives on how the hotel is situated in the mall. You sometimes, people tend not to even see the hotel when they're looking at the mall, but this, looking, heading, heading west on Green Street toward the mall, and again, a lot of times, people are just entering that door, walking right through to get to the other side. So, so they're, they're retracing the path of the streets in the mall quite a bit these days. So the third component of this site is the publicly-owned parking. Currently, the city leases parking to Lincoln Square Mall on the weekdays. This was, this picture was taken, these are the Health Alliance employees in this part of the lot. Of course, on Saturdays, this is the site of the wonderful Urbana Market at the Square, where we have thousands of visitors every weekend. The city also owns, owns these lots, just south of Illinois Street. And then just a reminder, this is the city building property here, and the city, the public also owns this block north of the city building. Well, we're about to issue an RFP later this month for proposals for development on this lot again. So again, three owners on this site, but I believe the site needs to be considered as a whole as we look to the future. So that's the questions I took to the group in Indianapolis, is, well, where do we start? And at this, at this workshop, we had mayors from North Dakota, Wyoming, Iowa, Hoffman Estates, Illinois, Champaign, Illinois. Mayor Finan and I both signed up for this thing, not knowing we did until we saw our names on the list. And Wauwatoso, Wisconsin. And then the resource team consisted of architects, landscape architects, some community and land use folks, the neighborhood development, redevelopment specialist, and a transportation planner. And this, this woman right here was our transportation planner, and she was a dead ringer for Jennifer Selby. In fact, when I saw her, I thought it was Jennifer, and I kept, yeah, it was, it was And the whole thing was coordinated through Ball State University College of Architecture and Planning. So we, in addition to presenting our own case studies, we, each of these individual resource team members gave a 40 to 45-minute presentation in their own area of expertise. So it was a great educational opportunity as well. So we had, we had lectures on civic architecture and urban form, and it was just, it was an incredible educational opportunity as well. The landscape architects focused on creating places for people and gave lots of examples. A lot of them gave examples from their own design work and their own projects that they've done all around the country. So we got to see lots of good examples from, from various parts of the country. And then Jennifer, and her name was even Jennifer, but her, her, her presentation was on the secret to happy traffic engineers, which was great, too. Anyway, as a result of the workshop brainstorming, and people were intrigued with, actually with this challenge, because it is, you know, it's not a simple one. Some of the things that came out of the workshop were a recommendation that any type of visioning for the site focus would include exploring connectivity between the university, Main Street, high school, middle school, campus. And they honed in on Green Street, Broadway Avenue, University Avenue, and then the neighbors on either side. So when we, we pulled up, you know, Google Earth was a great tool during this, during this whole thing, and they immediately could see the connections between, the strategic location of this site between campus and, and Carl and, and the neighborhoods. They also suggested looking at transit connections between the university, downtown Urbana, downtown Champaign, the new OSF presence campus, and Carl. And encouraged people, encouraged us to explore ways to reactivate the street grid and the streetscape on the site, whether it's via pedestrian, like it is now, vehicular, or both. But they all saw the site, and they saw the potential for improving the connectivity. And I think that, that has great potential here. And again, some of the key nodes, here's our, here's our, where's our site? Right, here's our site here. The connection along Green Street, especially after EMCOR rebuilds it, and the north-south connection straight up here to Crystal Lake Park, and the proximity to the two hospital campuses. So these, these areas are what people encouraged us to think about, making sure there's great connectivity from the site. This, this photo actually was taken by TJ Blakeman from Champaign. He was in an airplane photographing Champaign and happened to, I think they took a loop over Urbana, and he shot a couple, took a couple shots. And I just love it, I think it's a beautiful photo. But again, it really shows, shows this site and how it is related to some other key areas in our downtown and in our community. And again, here's Broadway heading that way, and Green Street heading that way. And just a few blocks west is the university, and a few blocks northwest is the Carl Hospital Campus, which is thousands and thousands and thousands of people who could be finding their way to our downtown. They all looked at the hotel, they looked at the mall, and almost universally, they said, you've got to liberate that hotel from the mall, which, you know, that was the word that was used, gotta liberate it. There are people who specialize now in reinvigorating malls all over the country. It's, it's, it's become a specialty. So, so there are many examples now around the country of malls that have been repurposed, reskinned, reconfigured to meet the needs of today in the future. And they're, they're worth taking a look at, and we'll, we'll be getting more examples. They suggested, you know, potential mall tenants, especially for this space that's being vacated, looking at educational, research and tech, government, arts and entertainment, you know, just, just a few things that were thrown out. Universally, they looked at all the parking, the seven or eight or 10 acres of parking, and they said, you gotta fill some of that in, it's too much surface parking. So that's where they recommended adding residential, mixed-use nodes in the parking lots, and then a lot of discussion about creating a civic green public plaza, home for market at the square, things like that. But those are just some of the ideas that were thrown out. And then we got a few sketches. These were things just drawn on the fly during the 35 or 40-minute discussion period. This was the architect, the head of the Architecture Department at Oklahoma, University of Oklahoma, who actually designed the Oklahoma City Memorial Site. But he's also the head of the Architecture Department. He, he focused on the connectivity piece of things, and again, Broadway Street, university, this is the future rail trail along the railroad track, and Green Street, and he's, he was like, you've got to develop those corridors and think about connectivity via those corridors. Architect with Race Show Architects, Tom Gallagher from Indianapolis, was busy, was busy sketching as well, and all sorts of, these, I think these are housing, actually. He's, he's adding housing here with parking inside and different ways of reconnecting things. I think one was a pedestrian pathway through and adding some green, and this is, this is the, there's the hotel here, so this would be developing, it looks like a plaza in front of the hotel at Broadway and Green, and then civic green down the center. So, so anyway, these were the kinds of things that, that came out of the, out of the discussion. And here's one, release the hotel. It's like, so I came away just, oh, just inspired, inspired, I guess is the word. But the main takeaways is, and they, the people, folks, they recommended as well, is one of the first places to start is go to the community, work with the community to help develop a vision for the entire site, you know? We can talk about individual components, but let's think about the entire site. Explore connectivity within the site, between important nodes in the community, because we want people to be able to, to get to this location, and to want to get to this location. And bottom line, make it a place where people want to be. That's, that's what they're calling place-making now, but, but that's basically it. You want it to be a place where people want to be. So that leads us to next steps, and I'll turn it over to Lori.
Thank you very much. I think what we have here is an, is an incredible opportunity, really, to capture all of those comments that we do here, just organically, when we're talking to people about Lincoln Square and about the whole 16-acre site. People are always willing to share that information, so let's capture it. What we're proposing here is a really in-depth, inclusive, but short and to-the-point, public engagement process. We do need to come up with a catch-your-name public engagement process, but we're working on that.
What's in your square?
Yeah, what's in your square? So really, we want to reach out to as many people as possible, be they residents, business owners, employees, visitors, would-be visitors. We want to find out, why do they come? Why don't they come? What might make them come? So to do that, really trying to reach out to as many people as possible means many different platforms, so we're looking at not only in-person activities, but also a lot of online engagement, because that's often quick. Looking at reaching out to students, folks of all ages, all areas of not only Urbana, but the community as a whole. So really, to try to get as much input as possible from as many different folks. I mentioned this would be, we're planning on just a short engagement, so this spring, see what we can gather this spring. There'll be a lot of activities out there that we can go to, to gather information, so that we won't have to create our own activities necessarily for people to go to. But hoping to conclude right around in May, which is, as the mayor mentioned, in advance of when many of the employees would be vacating the space. So then after that, we'll compile everything, share everything, and then I guess just figure out what that all means. Ultimately, perhaps there could be some energy generated from this process itself that might attract developers or others that have the means to make some of this visioning
One of the resource team members was David Rubin, who's a landscape architect and who's worked on, well, projects all over the country, but this was an example of one of the ways they get, he gathered community input in advance of the project they did in Allentown, Pennsylvania. And they, they- And they had people write breakup notes and love notes about the site, and got some very, very, well, actually, very useful information. So, there's lots of different ways to gather public input. Then, of course, they summarized it all and use that to inform planning and decisions going forward. But I think this is a great way to get people to expand the way they're thinking about this site, and to gauge, really, we need this to become a place that will serve this community for the next 50 years, the way that it has for the past 50 years. So, we can breathe new life into the site, meet needs, and this is a chance for anybody with an idea, big or small, you know, it can be about what kind of, whether you want porch swings instead of benches, or whether you want a water park. You know, I've heard both, actually, over the past year. So, it's an opportunity for people to, who've been thinking about Lincoln Square and have lots of ideas about Lincoln Square, to actually come and tell us, and we'll capture them and go from there. And that's, thank you for listening.
Any questions for the mayor? Mary Alice.
I'm curious, in terms of your ideas on how you're going to gather information, are you going to have any kind of public meetings that you'll invite people to come in, so that we can expect those announcements?
Probably all of the above is.
Okay, all right, all right.
Social media, online, in-person. Maybe not putting dots on poster boards, because, but anyway, yeah.
I will add that to do this effort effectively in such a short period of time, I'm hoping that we get a lot of people that are interested in doing things like sharing the social media or attending events, or just talking to your neighbors. Because I alone cannot get everybody the information, so I'm really hoping that I get some great involvement from everybody.
Thanks.
Eric, did you have something?
What is the, how would you physically liberate the hotel from the mall?
Okay, I'll tell you, because I've been thinking about this a lot. And it's all theoretical at this point. Let's see. Charlie, you're too efficient. Well, it's just begging, it's just begging for at least one corner of this roof to be removed.
So, you'd cut out one corner of the mall?
That's a good start, yeah. If one chose, if that was the plan to do it, yeah. And frankly, I think, well, we don't know what's behind it, but I think there's probably most of the facade of the hotel is still there. So, that logically would be, would be one way to go about it. And this would be a public plaza, gathering spot, but...
So, aha, okay.
I'm not, I'm not an engineer, I'm just, like, looking at pictures from above and...
Yeah, but of course, the pictures of the hotel facade from long ago suggest that that might be very nice.
The pieces are, it's all still there. Literally, they just, they just...
Walded in.
Yeah.
Dennis?
This is very exciting. While the concept of the mall was appropriate in the '70s, it looks like the consciousness now has changed, and we're ready to re-envision it. I think that's a tremendous idea. Obviously, the mall sits, it kind of squats right on a very important access route for the city. And I know personally that I walk through the mall. I don't necessarily stop to shop at the mall. I do, of course, I do shop at some of the stores, but, you know, I'm constantly going through the mall to get places down.
But not on a bicycle, right?
I don't have a bicycle, but, and I've seen the people who dance in there, and I see that, you know, I think the Great Hall, you know, you might consider trying to save the Great Hall, because it's a really great indoor space. But I don't know, I'm totally open to any kind of reconfiguration concept. If the city would be working with the mall ownership to re-envision it, do we have the funds in the Tiff District to help reconfigure the mall? Is that a source of, would we be, how would we achieve some of the dreams financially over a long period of time?
Well, that, you know, those questions will all have to be answered. I don't have the answers at this point. Obviously, it'd be a public-private partnership on this. But I firmly believe you have to have a vision first, and then you can figure out how to make that thing a reality.
I think it's been so important, for so long, to have a dedicated and obvious corridor between the downtown and campus. And we have never achieved it, even though we've talked about it theoretically for years. So, I really appreciate the different energy that's being presented tonight. It's a missing part of the development of downtown Urbana that could become pivotal. And if we could achieve something, and the community has actually talked about an open green space, too, in the downtown area. These things can revitalize the downtown, and I really appreciate the fact that, you know, you express the willingness to really consider. I mean, I could imagine facing, opening up Green Street as a connectivity route from east to west, to connect east and west Urbana in a way that it used to, and perhaps, you know, creating, you know, outside, an outside street there, or public passageway, and then making the facades of the stores along the currently closed mall become storefronts and a regular street environment.
Well, see, that's the kind of ideas that we're hoping are brought forth during this whole process. And we want to, what do people love about the place? What do people want to see changed? What, you know, what do you want to do here? What do you want to see here? What do you want to be here? And that's, the questions will be posing to the public. Because this is a, this is the civic heart of our downtown and of our community, really. And it can have a lot of functions.
Yep. All right, so, thank you for the presentation, both of you. I think it's very, I mean, it's in-depth, it's encouraging to see the connectivity, all of the different things that are, that could take place. And I look at the connectivity from Green Street and how the mall sort of stopped that connectivity. And it's only a few more blocks east before Green Street still runs into, I mean, it runs out either way it goes for us. So, I don't know, fine, if we can make the connectivity, I think that's great. But I don't know if the connectivity is the major issue from, on Green Street to connect with the other side of Green Street, if it's just trying to get us to the downtown. I'm excited about ideas of what we could put in the mall, because certainly, the studies are showing that malls are dying across the country. We talked a lot about shopping online and all that kind of different stuff. And what sort of civic or social activities and even businesses could be, become more vibrant in the mall to attract people to that area? Because, I mean, the downtown itself needs, it's, we talk a lot about making the downtown, you know, attracting people to downtown, but downtown has to become more attractive, right? You know, so, making this location that attractive location, I mean, I'm certainly intrigued by making that happen and looking forward to having other input from the citizens and stuff like that. And having a vision is super important. So, I look forward to participating in it in whatever way we can. The areas around it, the Independent Media Center, things like that, are those, as we look at this square footage, or these acres, this acres, nine acres of land, is it? I think it is. Do we think about programs that will help also beautify the facade, or the maintenance of anything around it as well? Do they get included in?
Well, we're not at that point, you know? Obviously, the, well, I guess this is public parking, too, right? Yeah. Didn't include that. I think everything is, you know, anything's a possibility at this point. And once you start working on an area, I, yeah, I think it can be.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Are these slides going to be available online?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I guess Charlie can turn them in. Here we go. Oh, you got it? Okay. Okay. I'll take the chair back. New Business, Resolution 2018-01-001R. Resolution of protest against a proposed map amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance.
And I should mention that on the agenda, the resolution is actually a protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance, but the rest of it adequately describes what's before you today. This is one of these resolutions that staff brings to you, because it is about actions that the county is taking, and you have the ability, as a city council, to indicate that the city should either protest or not protest that action. In this case, it is a proposed change to their zoning ordinance or their zoning regulations as they, as they deal with home occupations. And the staff recommendation, as well as the Plan Commission recommendation, is to defeat this resolution, thereby not protesting the change that the county is proposing. So, the change that the county is looking at is to allow minor auto repair as a home occupation in certain areas of the county, and with certain limitations, and with a special use permit. To compare that to the city's regulations, which we often do on changes that the county is doing to determine whether or not there might be an impact on the city, the city currently allows, excuse me, currently allows minor auto repairs as a home occupation if that individual gets a conditional use permit, which is a permit granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, there's a public hearing process that they would need to go through, and there'd usually be conditions placed on it. So, that's the city's process. So, the city requires a conditional use permit, and the county, under this proposal, would require a special use permit, which has a very similar process, the exception, of course, that it goes to not only their Zoning Board of Appeals, but also their county board. So, because this item is very, or this proposed change is so similar to the city's current regulations, we wouldn't imagine that it would have an impact on, a negative impact on the city. And therefore, as I mentioned, both Plan Commission at its December 21st meeting and staff would recommend that you defeat the resolution before you.
So, I would ask for a motion to defeat the resolution of protest with no attached conditions.
I move to defeat the resolution of protest with no attached conditions.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Reading the resolution on page two, section two, the word, it reads that the city of Urbana, the city council hereby resolves that the city of Urbana pursuant to provisions, blah, blah, does hereby approve a resolution. Shouldn't that be defeat? Given capital letters?
No, we vote no.
Charlie? Oh, I see, we're approving a resolution of protest, is that correct?
Charlie?
I can explain it, okay? You can either, if you move the, if you move the resolution as written, then to defeat it, everybody votes no. If you want to just vote on a motion to defeat it outright, I can reflect that in the record. So, you know, it just depends on how you word it. So, the current motion is to move to defeat. If you all vote yes, then the motion is defeated. If you want to move the resolution as written, then you vote no to defeat it.
So, the proper vote on the motion on the floor would be a no vote?
No, you moved to defeat it, so a proper motion would be to vote yes.
So, we agree to that?
The yes vote.
Unless you flip it around, and, yeah.
I moved exactly what you asked.
Yes.
Okay. If you don't object, you vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, how the motion is said, it doesn't reflect necessarily how the motion, how the wording is in section two?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The motion is to move to defeat it, so...
Okay. Are we ready to vote? Roll call?
Please. So, this is a move to defeat. Councilmember Sammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. Next up is one appointment to the Tree Commission. Losing my thought here. I'd like to appoint Marshall Belleville. He's been a resident of the city of Urbana for the last 40 years. He's retired as an arborist from the University of Illinois, and he had a great deal of responsibility in all aspects of tree maintenance and removal. I will point out, there's two more vacancies on the Tree Commission, if you know of anyone who's interested in serving. So, is there a motion for appointment of Marshall Belleville?
Yeah, I'll make the, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Marshall Belleville to the Tree Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you. We have an approval of the annual meeting schedule. Charlie?
Yeah, just returning back to a more common custom, which is to list off the meetings for the year. Normally, by ordinance, it's already set, the first and third Mondays, first city council, second and fourth Mondays for committee of the hall, except as they conflict with legal holidays, and the town board meets as part of the first Monday of each month. So, that schedule is reflected here. This is an opportunity to delete any potential meetings for the upcoming year that you know in advance might be a problem. And one example is December 24th. And you can do this by indicating which, you know, what you want to change, if anything, and then a voice vote, and is sufficient, a motion and voice vote is sufficient.
All right, I'll...
Dennis?
I can do something with that, I guess. Okay, I make a motion to adopt or approve the annual meeting schedule as presented by our city clerk, and to add the condition that we drop the Monday, December 24th, 2018 meeting, because it comes immediately before Christmas, and we're not going to be meeting on that day because of the holiday. We might as well, we might as well admit that and include that as part of the official meeting schedule.
So, your motion to, is to approve the schedule with the deletion of December 24th?
Yes.
Any other dates you'd like to delete? Jared?
I could see a potential conflict for the July 2nd Monday. Personally, I'm usually gone during that time to visit family in Texas. I don't know about anyone else's 4th of July typical schedules, but I know I'll be gone then.
Any discussion?
Hey, I'll second that, to accommodate fellow council member.
Charlie?
Because the town board meets that day, I would ask that you just reschedule that meeting to July 9th. And we combine the July 2nd and July 9 meetings there, so we do town board, committee, city council, and committee of the hall on July 9.
I'll support that.
And I will also support the change.
Any other recommended changes at this point? Eric?
Just a quick thought, there are five Mondays in July, so we could replace July 2nd with July 30th.
There's four Mondays.
Well, there are four Mondays on the, there are four Mondays...
Oh, on the calendar.
There are four Mondays on the meeting calendar, but there are five Mondays in the month. So, we could, if we simply slid everything down by a week, then we could, we could take off the first Monday instead of the fifth Monday.
I actually would prefer to merge.
Okay.
That's my preference.
Okay.
July and August tends to be vacation time, anyway.
Okay. Okey-dokey.
So, merge?
Yes.
Merge July 2nd and July 9th. Move July, reschedule July 2nd to July 9th. Any other changes? You can always alter this going forward.
Who seconded that? I'm sorry?
Dennis.
I did.
I did. Charlie. I did.
So we deleted December 24th and rescheduled the July 2nd meetings on July 9th. Are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that's passed. Last item on the agenda, we need a motion to go into closed session regarding property acquisition issues pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2.
Oh, move that we go into closed session regarding property acquisition issues and pursuant to the 5 ILCS 128-2C5.
I'll second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Dennis. All those in favor, please?
Leader roll call.
Call the roll.
City councilmembers, Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes.
That motion passes. So we need a motion to go back into open session to correct the language of this motion.
So moved. I'll second.
So moved by Aaron, seconded by Jared. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we are now back in open session. So we need to correct the language of this motion to read closed session regarding property sale issues.
Oh, ILCS 5C6.
Sale or disposal issues, and the relevant section is 5 ILCS 20/2C6. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Roll call.
We gotta do roll call again, yeah, sorry. Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
That most, yes, and that motion passes, so now we will return upstairs.
I'll make a motion that we come back from the...
Make it move, make it move.
Once the city clerk is ready, I'd like to make a motion to come back into open session. The second, Dennis Roberts.
I'll second that.
Or Bill.
Okay, got it?
Are you going to call the roll?
No, no, we don't need a roll call.
All right. Well, with no further business before the...
No, we got to vote.
We have to do yes or no.
We have a motion to go into open session.
Open session. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. That motion passes. Seeing no further bus, yes?
Just an announcement? Yep. That the city of Urbana Human Relations Office will have a traffic stop discussion. The city of Urbana will conduct a facilitated discussion on Urbana traffic enforcement on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018. Please join us for this opportunity to discuss your experiences and perceptions of how the Urbana Police Department's traffic enforcement impacts your day-to-day lives. This discussion will be solely focused on traffic enforcement in the city of Urbana. This discussion will be solely focused on traffic enforcement in the city of Urbana. I just thought I needed to read that twice. Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Urbana Civic Center, 108 East Water Street. A casual buffet dinner will be available at 5:30 p.m., followed by a presentation and discussion by the city of Urbana. Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Urbana Civic Center. Traffic stop discussion.
Any other announcements? Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.